Welcome, everyone. I now call the July 18th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting ads and Ds, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And the first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. I would like for council consensus to pull Agenda Bill 23-109, Initiating condemnation of a franchise utility easement for the Meridian Avenue South and 240th Street Roundabout Project as it was noticed to be heard on July 25th, 2023.
You need a motion, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh.
Then thumbs up.
There was shaking heads over there, so I'm gonna pretend like I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and then when you go to approve the agenda, you just do it as amended, but presuming no one has any objections.
And I'm not hearing anything else, so I'm gonna move on to presentations, reports, and briefings, and public engagement opportunities. We have theater in the park. You can enjoy an evening of heartfelt performances happening tomorrow night from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Park at Bothell Landing. We also have a Creative Arts Grant Workshop with our Arts Commission on July 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at City Hall to learn about the Creative Arts Grant Program and how to apply. And we have National Night Out on August 1st. It's time to start planning your neighborhood's National Night Out gathering. Invite an officer to stop by and say hello. All right, next up is Middle Housing Comprehensive Plan and Code Amendments. I'm gonna call on City Manager Standard.
Thank you, Mayor, and this'll be a combined staff briefing and City Manager report. I don't have any additional items. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. As noted in your packet tonight, we do have an update about Middle Housing Comprehensive Plan and Code Amendments and the timing of what to expect coming up next. As you'll recall, last week, we did hold a public hearing, heard from the community members, and all of those comments are captured and on the record and will be considered as we move forward. Also, as discussed last week, our staff is currently engaged in overall Comprehensive Plan Amendments, including one that's going to the Planning Commission tomorrow night, and so they're gonna be focusing their attention on engaging on that, getting it ready, at the same time also now going through and taking all the feedback that they've received through the middle housing conversations to prepare the Comprehensive Plan Amendment as well as any code changes with that. That's also with an eye towards the fact that, as we've discussed, when this process started, it was before the state enacted a law about middle housing, and now there is state law. So as we continue to get more details about that and make sure that, again, that what we're doing is informed by it, but then also looking comprehensively at both Comprehensive Plan Amendments, comprehensive is the key word there, we'll be coming back, staff will be coming back in the fall with more information on both of them. And again, we'll see what happens with the Planning Commission on the matter that they're considering and having their public hearing on tomorrow night. So those will come back in a tandem. What I also just wanna highlight is that with that change, I know some people will wonder, okay, well, when? The fall can be long. So I wanna just reassure people that the middle housing webpage will be continuously updated, so people can sign up for alerts there. Staff will also be notifying all parties of record, which is anyone who's contacted the council with middle housing questions. They'll specifically be notified via email. If somebody is hearing this now and hasn't done that before and wants notification, they can contact ImagineBothell@bothelllaw.gov and ask to be added. So again, wanna make sure that we're clear that there will be plenty of communication and most likely another public hearing and opportunity here from our community as well. So we'll be picking that back up in the fall, and until then, we'll be working behind the scenes, getting the Comprehensive Plan Amendments ready.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is visitor comment, or actually, no, council committee reports. Councilmembers, Councilmember Zornz?
Okay, I'm stepping a little bit outside of committee reports to talk about an event that we had on Saturday, which was really incredible. It was based on Cody Goldberg's Harper's Playground for creating inclusive playgrounds, which I think everybody is very excited for. They had great handouts, including a donation catalog, which I think is genius. And I have a few highlights to whet your appetite, anyone's appetite who wants to go see. It was taped and recorded, so anybody who would like to go listen to it, I don't think this is a spoiler alert for you. But what I pulled out of it was a few main key observations. Nature is a vital playground for opportunities to interact and play. It's an optimal childhood development opportunity. Fundraising is a great way to ensure that the community is bought in. Love that observation. We're creating an environment where kids with different backgrounds can create relationship. So really important. And a really well-designed inclusive space is really designed for everyone, not just kids with disabilities. It's for everyone so that they can make connections. Super. That was very powerful. Disability is a great uniter, and I love this observation that he made, that if you live long enough, everyone faces disability. And these playgrounds do lend themselves to all ages, including seniors. We're better when we fight together for the same slice of pie. I thought, that's good. That's a good observation. And Vancouver, I don't know if I can wait till AWC to see Marshall Park. Evidently, it's about ready to open, but they have, one thing they have is they don't call it a skate park, they call it a wheel play zone. And then they have, for those who are into community art, I would bet, I would say maybe Franklin the Turtle, if you read Franklin the Turtle, they have Franklin-like sculptures all over the park. His name is Petey, and it's interactive, like there's one place where Petey has his little front legs together, and people put flowers, you know, just put flowers in his little turtle arms. And that, I think, I'm going to leave you with, so you can go watch the video yourself. But it was really good.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yeah, I've got an update from the North King County Coalition on Homelessness. At each of those meetings, the Oaks Enhanced Shelter provides an update, as well as the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And so we got an update from the Oaks, saying that they're at full capacity, and their waitlist is so long, they could honestly fill another shelter of its size in North King County. They are holding an upcoming community picnic on July 22nd, and that is for people who have volunteered, contributed, and really, that's the City of Bothell, because they are one of our granting agencies. Update from King County Regional Homelessness Authority is that there was a report on funding from the North King County agencies, and how the money that we've sent to the homelessness authority goes to North King County agencies as well. They are looking for, they have questions around how interested are cities on knowing last reported residents? When we talk about where are people who are currently unhoused coming from? What community is their last reported residence? We find that, like, I know that here in Bothell, we talk about that as being useful information so that we know who, like, how is Bothell contributing, and how are we, you know, looking out for our community members as they have to navigate the whole unhoused landscape? And then there is also an update about a severe weather shelter. There are efforts at hand to build capacity in North King County so that we can have a severe weather shelter that's staffed by trained staff. That was the reason why we've lost the St. Dunston's location, is that volunteers were running it, and it wasn't, it wasn't working out very well, because there was a higher level of need that meant that staff needed to be trained to staff, to provide support during those evenings when the shelter was open. So there's more information available at kcrh.org, and there's a severe weather shelter page for people who are interested. And that's my update.
Awesome. Thank you both. All right, last call. All right. Seeing others, the City has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all City Council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
We do. Mayor Thompson, we've received no written comments this evening, and we have one person, Roger. I do not have a last name for Roger, but if you're here, and I do not see him on the virtual, so is anybody named Roger, signed up to speak? Okay, that's all I have, signed up to speak. If there's anyone, Mr. Swanson, if you'd like to step to the podium?
Thanks, Laura. Well, you gotta keep good on my word. Last week, I told you about the clerk makes $40,000 a year that drives little kids around. Remember the umbrella joke? Yeah, I got another one for you, but I don't have time for it tonight. It's about jumper cables. It's good. It's really good. I'll try to get to it next week. I wanna remind the council that you guys are not the agents of my altruism, right? I give away to charity, and I give away a lot. You guys don't get to slice and dice the social equity that this community has built for 40, 50, 60 years. You don't get to reassign it to charities or things you think are what I want. You're not better than us. You're not smarter than us. They're not, you're not more compassionate than us. I also wanna double down on Ann Agard's comment last week. Man, she's sharp. HB 1110, form, scale, and character. Okay, I like Exemplary speaking the best, but there are too much detail, so I wrote this down. Hopefully, I can get through it. Our current vision statement states, maintain strong residential neighborhoods through public investments and physical improvements, intended to enhance neighborhood identity through public policy decisions, intended to protect neighborhoods from intrusion by incompatible uses. I don't know, did we got a passing grade on that? Think about your actions last four or five years. Conveys an overall single-family residential character. I mean, that's the way it reads now, since 2015. What have you guys done? Lot P. Honors its past and provides a perspective for the future by preserving significant historic buildings. Protects, preserves, enhances those features of the natural environment which are sensitive to human activities. Now, the rest is a detail. The purpose of the natural environment element is to expand upon the community's commitment to stewardship of natural resources expressed in the vision statement, and provide a policy basis for city decisions which affect the natural environment. The GMA in part contains the following goal concerning the environment. Protect the environment, enhance the state's high quality of life, including air and water quality, available water. I also wanna call your attentions to the revised code of Washington. You have to write these down, I don't have time to read it. RCW 43.21CO30. RC 4321C.40. RC 43.31, wow, 120, I think. These verbal comments I make, they are as binding upon you people-
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up.
-as a written statement.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
I expect you guys to deliberate on these RCWs and come out with a finding.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? I'm not seeing anyone. Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, next up is projected agenda discussion. Anybody? All right, seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the aforementioned edit. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Dodd, and a second from Councilmember Zornz. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you. I guess the thing we moved wasn't on the consent agenda, but we got the motion right anyway. All right, next up, we are going to reset for the study session. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 6:28 PM.
Recording stopped.
All right, welcome back. Next up on our agenda, we have a study session for utility rate. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and we do have, this is the one study session we have tonight. Council, we recall, we had some conversations last year during the budget adoption around utility rates and outreach and how, what goes into it. So tonight, we are joined by our consultants, as well as by staff, to talk through a review of utility rates for 2024. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Boyd Benson, who is our Utilities and Development Division Manager. Boyd, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for this time. Once again, Boyd Benson, Utilities and Development Services Manager. Tonight, we have John Giorducci and Tagi Akker from the firm, consulting firm FCS Group, and they're a financial consulting firm that specializes in rates and capital facility charges with jurisdictions and such. John or Tagi, do you wanna mention anything about the firm before we jump in, or?
Sure. And thank you, Tagi. Yeah, as Boyd mentioned, this is what we do. We've been in business since 1988, and I'm a principal with the firm, so very pleased to be here to kick off the rate study. We don't have any results to share with you tonight, but.
Sure. Cool. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so tonight, this is just a presentation, an overview of the methodology. There are no results to share, but this is an opportunity to hear council's feedback and thoughts and opinions that might help shape this evaluation. We've started this project about, well, we had a scope for this about three years ago, and with COVID, it was kind of deferred, and the initial kickoff was, I think, March. So there's been a lot of information going back and forth. We've engaged assistance from finance, and we're going along with the information. So once again, we're to seek council feedback and question, and no formal action is required or requested tonight. Real quick overview, and then we're gonna jump into different subjects, and if you'd like to take this one. Tagi?
Yes, I'll, actually, we'll kick it to Tagi in a minute, who's your project manager on the study. On the way that we've laid this out, we've got a little bit of background, sort of general background on rate studies, and then we'll talk a little bit about communication and outreach. Boyd will talk about the communication plan, and then we'll get into some of the key pieces of a rate study. Fiscal policies, we have some examples of those. The revenue requirement piece, which is a very important piece of a rate study. Cost of service and rate design, we'll define those as we go, give you some examples, and then, of course, questions and discussion. And as we understand it, no action requested from the council tonight. So why are rate studies important? Your different utilities are essentially business units within the city government, as you know. Rates are the primary revenue source needed to recover the costs of each of those utilities. The other thing that rates do is they put into numbers the different choices you make about priorities and policies and different initiatives that you might have, like conservation. They help when set adequately, they help maintain the long-term fiscal health of each of the utilities and the integrity of those fiscal systems. There's also a piece to rate studies which is important for accountability. They communicate through the rates themselves and the monthly bills, the impacts of the financial decisions that the council makes, the city makes. They are important to fairness among customer groups. The rates are structured. In a perfect world, they would be structured so that everybody pays exactly proportionally to their benefit or services required. That's our goal. We try to achieve that in the rate structures. They're also important to the education of folks who are paying attention through public meetings, talk about rates and how they're structured, and what the needs of each utility are. They're a communication tool from that standpoint. So what do the rates fund? These are snapshots from, that we pulled from the city's website, but they're really useful, high-level summaries of the types of costs that are recovered in rates for each of the three utilities, starting with water. The biggest, the biggest number you see up there in the water pie are capital projects. That's about 3.9 million. Water purchases at about a little less than 2 million, staffing at about 1.7 million, and you see taxes and inter-fund services, supplies, making up the remainder of the water utilities expenses. About, you see some key features of the water system, about 83 miles of mains, three reservoirs, four pump stations, and fire hydrants, of course. For the sewer utility, about 2 million in capital, less because treatment is paid for at the tune, to the tune of about $6.1 million. So there's less capital needed. Staffing about 1.6 billion for sewer, about 70 miles of sewer mains for lift stations. And for stormwater, a whole lot of pipe, about 100, almost 150 miles of pipe, and 8,500 catch basins. You see very capital-intensive utility in stormwater, about 4.4 million, and then staffing at about 3.3 million. So the one thing that we always keep in mind, and it's important to remember about rates, rates are established to recover the costs of doing business for each of these utilities, unlike a general fund where you look at the revenue and then budget to the revenue from year to year. Rates are a cost recovery mechanism. So when we perform a rate study, sort of starting from the top of this cycle, fiscal policies are really important input to determining how much money is needed from rates, which is that revenue requirement number. So fiscal policies tell us what target reserves might be prudent in order to guard against revenue risk or expense risk from year to year. Once we have guidance on those fiscal policies, then we bring in the operating budget, the capital plans, to determine that revenue requirement number. That's how much rate revenue is needed to meet all the financial obligations of each utility. The cost of service analysis begins to look at that revenue requirement pie and determine who should, how the pie should be sliced among your different customer classes. That's the rate fairness portion of the rate study. Are you charging your customers equitably in the rates for different customer classes? That's further reflected in the rate design. This is where, I mentioned conservation as an example, this is where you might structure the water rates, for example, to incentivize conservation or reflect that value. And so the rate design is also a communication tool, but designed to recover the needed revenue. And then we get into communication. How are the rates communicated to the rate payers, and how is their input and their involvement successfully obtained?
And real quick, if you could go to the back one slide, please. Thank you, though. And just to add a few things on to that, when you look at fiscal policy evaluation, this is something we'll work with finance with, and with the folks they work, the professionals. Why we're doing this now is we've already done a revenue forecast in the past for the 2023, 2024 budget. We've already done the capital facilities plans, we know all these things. So if we didn't do this this year, we'd be coming forward with what you typically see for an annual rate update is, okay, in 2023, developed a budget, or sorry, 2022, and we increased rates in 2023 to, we happen to, to take care of business there. We have a forecast for 2024, which has a placeholder for inflation and the rest, and was that enough? It has a placeholder for sewer treatment, and is that what actually happened? So those type of things, this isn't, you know, just, it's, what's most exciting to me is the cost of service analysis. I mean, is the demand on the water system more for high-fire flow requirements for commercial as opposed to irrigation in someone's backyard? That may be, yes. Are we doing these larger projects to benefit high-volume users? Are they paying their fair share of those projects? So you start looking at these things, and that's where FCSG brings these components in and says, okay, it's not just conservation and this or that, but, okay, this use uses 100 gallons, this uses 100 gallons, but this is occurring all at one time, and it means we need bigger pipes and bigger pumps, so they'll look at that. The rate design, we think, is important when we get a little further along. Right now, we have residential and multifamily and commercial. Should we be looking at something in between there? There's discussions of ADUs, there's discussions of smaller houses or middle housing, and we don't have to attribute a name to it, but should a 4,000-square-foot home on a quarter-acre lot have the same connection charge or the same base rate as an ADU that could be on a lot that's 1,500 square feet? So these are the type of questions, and a lot of it's policy, and that's why we'll have some questions near the end of that. And then the communication plan, which is the next slide, please. Thanks. It starts with a discussion like this. We all know what utilities do, we all know that we have expenses and we have revenue, are there some certain things that council's looking out towards? And we've heard things in the past, and we've marked those down. So that's discussions with council. We have information on the utility billing website, we're starting to roll out information in sewer and water bills. Further down the line, you'll see a public hearing. That's pretty far along, so we'll be coming back in the fall with actual results to say, look, FCSG has seen this and this, and we're proposing this type of rate to bridge this kind of middle ground, or this, this or that. There'll be those discussions. Then it's a public hearing where we get to hear from the public. But all this time through, we're soliciting information from the public, and part of that is to get the information out. Most people, if you ask, what do you think about rate increases or rate changes, they're gonna say, no, thank you. But if you tell them the whole story, hey, we want to maintain our system and improve it over time, as opposed to wait for failure where costs are very high, we wanna spread these costs out over time, we wanna look for opportunities to do these repairs with other projects and get them through. I think then, instead of, hey, stop looking at our rates and potentially raising them, it's then, okay, we understand, we like having good water level service in sewer and storm, and so we'll have that. And part of that is city e-news and website, we're looking at storyboards, which we're just talking to our communication folks today, where it's somewhat interactive. You're getting information about the process, you're seeing what it's for, and then you're being asked questions. There's a survey being developed to ask those type of things, and part of that is to educate as well, and then the mailers. So that's kind of the public outreach. We've heard very strongly from council- So that's kind of the public outreach, we've heard very strongly from council in the past that the public should be involved in this, and they should. And on the smaller rate updates, it's been less participation because they've been kind of little steps, but this is where the policy's set and the framework sets. We're really excited about this outreach component. Thank you.
So we'll do a little bit of a deeper dive on some of the benefits of fiscal policies and sound fiscal policies, and then give you a couple of examples. What are the benefits of fiscal policies? Well, they lead to very planful, hopefully smoothed rate adjustments over time, so you don't have surprises and spikes in rates over time. They help the utilities weather financial risk to both revenues and expenses by carrying some amount of a cushion there to handle those ups and downs. There are metrics and ratios that we use to benchmark the utilities against other utilities in the region, so you kind of know how you're doing by those benchmarks. I mentioned keeping rates stable over time, that's a very important feature of fiscal policies, that sort of smooth rate adjustments over time. They can be very important, strong fiscal policies, very important to creditors when, if you do need to issue debt, having good fiscal policies is a signal that you have strong financial management. And then the policies, and we'll show you examples of this on the next slide, can vary by the type of utility. The operating reserve, for example, is typically set as a number of days of cash operating expenses. So, for example, 45, 60, 90, or 100 days of cash operating expenses, that is a minimum fund balance target. So this is not an annual contribution that's made, it is, if you dip below that minimum target, replenish it up to the minimum. So up in the upper right-hand corner, you see what have been the city's policies for water, sewer and stormwater. You notice water and sewer 60-day reserve targets and stormwater's 120 days. The reason stormwater's 120 days is because it's billed on the property tax statements for both King and Snohomish counties. So you get revenue spikes in April and October, and you need to have the fund balance to carry you in between those revenue spikes. Water and sewer, while water could still be a somewhat volatile revenue stream over the course of the year because of summer usage and winter usage differences, those are very adequate minimum reserve targets at 60 days and should be just fine to keep those utilities healthy. So examples of how those numbers can vary, and an operating reserve target. And these are targets we will again examine as part of the study. The capital reserve, as an example, is shown on the next page, and these are, these numbers are made up just to give you an idea of how the capital reserve minimum balance is often set. We'll look at the cost of the assets, in this case for a water utility, 35 million. Often we use 1% to 2% of the total asset value as a minimum fund target. So you see 1% to 2% would result in minimum fund balance targets of 350,000 or 700,000. And so you will see those types of choices presented as we move forward with the rate study.
Yeah, and just to add to that real quick, thank you, Robin. These restricted funds are really, really important. The operating reserve is really important, so we can keep doing work should we not have a revenue source, but I think just as important, are these restricted for the capital and the assets? We program all our capital work, there are contingencies in those capital projects that usually cover everything, but this 10% of the average annual capital project cost, one, it's policy, so we have to do that, and FCSG will look, is that the appropriate amount? But two, if something goes sideways, we lose a reservoir as part of a repair project or something like that, those funds are there, we never touch them, we don't use them as part of, these are the funds we can use. They're restricted when we present those with the fund balances, don't touch those, this is unavailable. And the same with the 2% of assets. Once again, I think the city of Bothell does a very good job of maintaining and improving systems before they fail, but that's there just for that. This is for sunrise, right? We didn't end up having to use the reserve for that because we could find the funds during, through another capital project, but those are the ones, all of a sudden we lose a water main and a hall and it's not on the capital project list and the rest. So in the last five, six years, I haven't seen us actually have to dip into these reserves, which is very good, they're there when we need them, but like I said, FCSG will look to make sure that those are appropriate amounts.
All right. So next up is a little bit of a deeper dive into the revenue requirement forecast. Next slide, please. So as John mentioned earlier, when we're setting rates, the main goal is to recover the cost of providing service. And typically, that comes within three different buckets. One is what it might cost to achieve certain financial policies, that might be replenishing reserves, that might be setting rates to generate enough rate revenue to cash fund part of your capital project program. It could be meeting a certain debt covenants for loans or revenue bonds that you might have on the books. Other types of costs can be operating, they're typically a little bit more predictable based on the budget numbers. These are your people that you employ, salaries and benefits, inspections, maintenance, professional services. Some big-ticket items for water, as John mentioned with those pie charts, purchased water from SPU. And the wastewater sewer utility, one of the big-ticket items is what you pay to King County to treat sewage, and that's roughly half of that pie chart that we looked at earlier. And then in any given year, you might be taking on multiple projects in each utility, so depending on the size and number of those projects, that can be a little bit more variable year to year. And that's where that advanced planning comes into place in terms of looking ahead six years at a time to make sure that you have enough reserves, enough rates to cash fund part of those projects. And if you need to borrow, having rates set ahead of time to cover potential new debt service for new loans that you might take on. I think Boyd wanted to touch on a couple of those bolded items there.
Thank you, Toggy. Yeah, and a few of these, the big one is on the bottom, we'll save that for the last, but the staffing evaluation, typically, we forecast on the utilities at least seven years out, so that covers the capital facilities plan. It's not, obviously, the council adopts a two-year budget and those are set in stone, but we forecast that far out. We typically don't include any staffing increases in that, because those come with each budget, but we are seeing new requirements with respect to stormwater, the new stormwater permits coming out, they'll have additional requirements. So one aspect of this that you'll see that's not in the typical annual update is, we'd like to look forward. As population increases, should we be looking to see that staffing is increased to cover the extra burden on the system? It's no decision, but it is, should we be looking at these things as part of the evaluation? And staff would recommend, this is something to consider, nothing's ever set in stone because these positions are created with each budget, but it's probably something to put in the variables. The wholesale cost, we've been really fortunate with water, it's been a 0% increase for the last couple of years. SPU does a really good job of managing their funds. King County rates have increased significantly, and you'll see this below, this is actually adopted rate in plan, the only adopted rate is the 2024, but standard single-family residential unit detached on its own lot pays about $144 every two months. And of that, 52 times two, 104, is going directly to treat wastewater. So the funds used to operate the system, the pump stations, everything else is about $39, $40 every two months, it's actually going to city revenue, so it's a relatively small component. So when we see these increases being proposed and discussed, it really sends some red flags, we need to make sure that our sewer utility is strong. So if there's a good balance in that utility, to help offset future rate increases, staff would say, let's consider that. And these are the minimums. This is, like I said, it just about doubles in the next 10 years. Should a fourth treatment plant be needed to improve water quality and the rest in Puget Sound, you could see multiples of that increase. So we're really looking at these things as, okay, we don't budget for them now, but let's keep them in mind so we're not surprised in the future. So I just wanted to share a bit about that.
Thanks, Boyd. One of the big decisions when looking at each utility's rates is how do we fund the capital program? And that can be from cash reserves you've already accumulated from past years, it could be, you know, as new development occurs, they pay for connection charges as they do for water, sewer and stormwater. But the rest would be, okay, it could come from cash, rate revenues, and it could come from debt borrowing either through low-cost state loans or in some cases, revenue bonds. And when balancing these things, you know, each of these has a rate impact. So cash, for example, typically, we recommend trying to cash fund more of your routine repair and replacement projects, they're a little bit more predictable, a little bit more scalable, saving debt for more of those one-time or larger projects that would be hard to save up in advance for. And by borrowing for those types of projects on occasion, can help spread out that cost over time. So as growth occurs, as new customers begin paying monthly rates, they would then pay a share of that ongoing debt service, typically over, you know, say a 20-year period. Cash does have the benefit of, you know, avoiding interest costs on debt service, but if it takes a long time to save up for certain types of projects, you might have to pay more for the project due to inflation. And debt service, you can complete the projects faster by borrowing, but there's an interest cost. So we try to balance a lot of these types of things in the forecast to make a blend of cash and borrowing in a way that helps mitigate rates over time. So when you put it all together, you know, how much revenue is needed, that's what we would call the revenue requirement. It's achieving financial policies, it's meeting your adopted budget, operating and maintenance costs, O and M costs, and those bottom two boxes are how you fund your capital program. You add that all together, and that's your annual revenue needs, and we look at it over a multi-year period and then compare what the needs are against your current rate revenues. If there's a deficiency there, that's where rate increases would come into play to make sure that you're always staying at that cost of providing service instead of dipping down into reserves.
Just to add one or more, two things to this, so as part of this, there'll also be benchmarking analyses with respect to other utility districts and utilities. So typically, what we do is we'll bring forward, okay, this is what a typical Bothell customer pays for this use, and this is Alderwood, and this is Nud, and this is Kirkland. FCSG will dive into that deeper. So it's not just, we have relatively low rates for storm. It's, well, we have these rates because of this, 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 and this, and we compare because of this, 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 and this, or let's talk about the water utility, and it's, okay, well, we may spend more on capital now, but that's, once again, to prevent failures in the future. And that typically costs less than waiting for something to fail. So we'll try to compare things, I'm not going to say holistically, but just, yeah, I'm not even sure what the word would be, but it's looking at different aspects of each utility and how the bills are completed. It could be the number of employees for this, or the cost per 1,000 miles of pipe, or this or this or this. So it'll be a little more in-depth than what you see, and everyone has different rate structures. One utility may have a high base rate for sewer and a very low additional charge for consumption. Another utility may have a low base rate with high charge for consumption unit. So those type of things, we compared a bit, so it gives a little more complete story of why Bothell is unique and a little different.
So I think that wraps up the revenue requirement discussion, and then we move into the cost of service analysis. And as John mentioned earlier, you know, you can think about the revenue requirement as, you know, how big does the pie need to be in each utility? And then the cost of service essentially looks at, how do we slice up that pie equitably among the city's customer classes? And we'll be using hypothetical numbers in the next few slides, but just to give you an idea of what it will look like when we come back in the fall. So in this particular example, you have residential customers generating about 55% of overall water utility revenues, 39% coming from commercial, and then multifamily, a smaller slice there at 6%. And the example that we'll step through in the next few slides will show how that pie changes based on the cost of service analysis, the before and after picture. So the general flow of a comprehensive rate study would be, how much revenue do we need? And then we look at what makes up that revenue requirement, that's staffing costs, it's repair and maintenance, it's paying debt service. You have certain staff working on the water distribution system, certain staff working on, you know, pump stations, et cetera. And we try to slice up with the input of city staff, comprehensive plans, the total cost of the water utility into these different functional buckets. You have customer billing, postage, those are customer costs. You have costs related to providing typical average demand throughout the day, throughout the year. And as Boyd mentioned earlier in one of his examples, some customers use more water at certain times of the day, certain times of the year, you know, watering your yard, filling of a pool, watering your garden. So all of those different types of uses have different impacts on the system. So by trying to slice up the revenue requirement into these different buckets, we can then see, okay, single-family uses the system this way, multifamily doesn't peak as much in the summer for irrigation, commercial uses it in a different way and may have different fire flow requirements than single-family and multifamily. So we try to figure out how much each customer class should be paying, compare that with what they are currently paying, and that may indicate some sort of cost recovery shift amongst the customer classes that would be independent of the overall revenue needs of the utility. So as an example, on the next slide, this is a pretty common water usage profile for water utility. You can see residential customers, often one of the largest in terms of overall water use, and they also typically peak the most, often in the summer months as irrigate their lawn and other water usage types. Commercial, depending on if it includes city parks or schools that are watering athletic fields, may see some peaking, but not as much as commercial. And then multifamily's pretty flat. So these types of things influence the cost of service analysis. So just as an example, you know, commercial customers often one of the smaller customer groups in terms of percentage, in this case, they're 9% of overall accounts, but they make up a pretty significant portion of overall water usage. So they'd get a small slice of the customer costs, but a much larger share of base demand or average water demand as they use nearly half of the overall water that is consumed in this particular example utility. So in the end, the result of this particular example, in a revenue-neutral scenario, what we found was multifamily was subsidizing single-family and commercial customers. And one potential item here is, you can make that change the next year, but more often than not, water utilities and cities will phase in these impacts over multiple years to try to mitigate impacts on any one particular customer group in one year. So spreading that out over multiple years, you can see that multifamily might see flat rates or even rate decreases, while residential and commercial need to increase a little bit more to make up the difference. So that's the type of analysis that we'll be doing for each of the utilities, in particular water and sewer.
For sure. And once again, this is an example only, these aren't real numbers, so, but I think the main takeaway is, what do you need, the total revenue? And how is it collected currently? What do you need, same total revenue, how, should it be collected in the future? And then how do you make those changes? So I just wanted to reinforce that.
Example numbers only.
Yes. Next slide, please. Oh, go ahead.
Do you have a comment, John? So last slide, and cost of service just shows how that beginning pie would end up being sliced after the cost of service analysis. You can see one particular shift, multifamily going from 6% of overall revenues down to 4.5% of overall revenues, and that would be what we would say is a more fair way to recover costs from the different customer groups. So when we look at this for the city of Bothell, we'll be looking at So when we look at this for the city of Bothell, we'll be looking at usage statistics for your own customers, the ins and outs of your overall operating and capital budgets, and coming up with a tailored analysis for your utility. And lastly, nearing the end here is rate design. As John mentioned, this is really a primary way to communicate with your customers. When they get that bill every couple of months, they'll see a water line item, a sewer line item, not storm water because that's billed on the property tax statements. But I wanted to touch on that water box there on the left. This is for a single-family customer. It's the rate schedule for 2023. And this is a way that the city's already encouraging water conservation. You can see that there's a base fee that applies no matter how much water you use. And then depending on how much water is used in a billing period, you might be paying, you know, $3.43 per 100 cubic feet in that first block, all the way on up to that top block, which is nearly three times as much the rate. So the more water you use, the higher that unit rate goes and the higher your water bill would be. And it's a good way to communicate with the customers of water usage correlates to your overall bill every couple of months.
Real quick on that last slide, just so you don't have a heart attack with the 951 per CCF. Our average residential consumption is 11 CCFs every two months. So it's good. I mean, I'm not saying that's the increase, the rate scale you see up there is used by many jurisdictions to promote water conservation, and it does a good job. But we typically see that we're right around the 10, 11 CCF. So it's, most folks are paying the lowest rates available. Oh, this is mine. So staff and management have been looking at some possible approaches for rates, and these are just ideas, and feedback is good at the end of this or any time. But when you look at how we treat rates and facility charges, they're different. So what we show on the right-hand side is what's charged by King County to buy into the system as a facility charge. Your new service, you do this. It's not the same for everybody. If you have a bigger impact on the system, you're paying more for buying in and for the share of projects that will help mitigate those impacts. So ADUs are .59, a large home is 1.16. We don't do that currently here at the city of Bothell for water or sewer. So this is something, should we be looking at this approach? And it actually makes really good sense. It's based on really sound financial evaluations. Actually, I think FCSG did this for King County back in 2018, 2019. It's generally accepted. Can we do something like this for water? We could. Right now, the smallest meter you can get is a 3/4-inch meter. That's the same 3/4-inch meter for this person's 4,000-square-foot home as this person's 800-square-foot ADU. Should they be paying the same amount? Does that 3/4-inch meter, which is our measurement, represent the same burden? The answer may be no. So staff is looking forward to be part of the solution with the missing middle and the ADUs. Council may not have determined what that actually looks like right now, but there is, there are provisions for subdivision in there to achieve those densities. So if you have a single-family residential unit on one lot with one meter, and that turns into four lots with four meters, which is good, I mean, that's ownership. You don't want someone else in charge of your water meter if you own that property, right? Well, do those four smaller units have the same impact as four single-family residential units? The answer is most likely not. They don't have the yard space, they don't have the... So we're looking at those type of opportunities, and we're really excited about that. And that's part of the information that FCSG will be looking at as well. So we're making sure we're an active voice in this and making sure that we can get things pointed in the right direction. So you will see some discussions about new rate categories. King County uses a 1,500-square-foot threshold for where they start looking at smaller uses, microhousing, ADUs, middle housing. And it may be that staff recommend to management and to council that, yeah, we might look at that as well. Now, that's for facility charges, which is part of this evaluation, but I shared that first because rates, the main part about this, is the same thing. Everyone pays the same base fee for water. It's $35 plus your water usage on top. Well, that may be fair and equitable. Once again, there's one unit paying $35, and all of a sudden, that's now four lots with four small units. Should they be paying four times $35? The answer is maybe yes, maybe no. One of the approaches staff's looking at is we have a discount for senior and low income, and it's 75%. Could discounts be applied to these base rates and the rest? And we're really excited about this. Other utilities are looking to react to these things, and we're trying to be part of the solution, working with community development, finance, and the rest. So you'll see some of these things as pretty strong recommendations for consideration because we think they make sense. People should pay their fair share, but an ADU does not have the same burden in this staff person's opinion as a 4,000-square-foot home. So you'll see some of that. I think that's it. So on this, this is a time for discussion. If we could go one more slide, please, Robin. We have some just starter questions. This is to get your feedback and understand what council would like to see out of this evaluation. Yeah, there are two questions up there. Does council support? They're easy ones. They're just out there to start the conversation. Do you support continuing the senior disabled low-income discount? Right now, it can be improved. Our language is old. There's other things that FCO students look at to make sure we're in accordance with the Washington State Charter and the rest. So that's being looked at. We have draft white papers for that. So that's one. And then, is council interested in seeing staff work on new rate categories for some of these newer residential uses? They really do fall between the crack. A multifamily unit, let's say Ross Road Apartments, right? That's, I should know the number of units, but I'm not going to say because I'll get it wrong, but that's one 2-inch meter that serves that entire facility. They're paying their fair share. They're getting a lot of use. That isn't 57 units with each meter. So it's really easy with multifamily when you have large units where it's not, you know, foundation to rooftop ownership. Just get a bigger meter because everyone's sharing. Now then, when you get your own meter, because that's what we want to see, if you, if we're lowering the barriers to affordability and housing, it's set up so they get their, it could be a rental, it could be a condo, or it could be fee simple property, and they will have their own meter. You can't have someone else paying for your sewer water. So those are the type of things we're talking about with this new rate and facility charge evaluation. So those are the kind of the prompts, and we'd love to hear some thoughts or feedback, please.
I'm a yes on both. The utility rate discount program, I'd really like to see that go toward the people that need help the most. So I'd be particularly more interested in seeing that for folks that are, you know, low-income, people with disabilities. I'm not sure about just purely based on age because you've got wealthy people that are older. I don't know why we would give them a discount, but for sure, if they're living on a fixed income and they're below, you know, some merit of income cap, absolutely. And I'm maybe as excited as you are about the different, not just buy-in fees, but also rates scaled to home size. That makes all the sense in the world. Like, we should charge people for the impact they have in what they use, and the more we can, the more we can make that accurate, the happier I would be. So super excited to hear about that, too. Thank you.
I would echo the mayor in that. I'm sorry, the editor in me is coming out disabled instead of disables. Thank you. Yeah. And then, and I think the mayor makes a good point that when, like, I think we use the term senior to describe people on fixed incomes, but that's not necessarily reflective of the actual demographic that we're talking about. So, you know, people on fixed incomes, you can be on social security and a younger adult on a fixed income. Yeah, thank you.
So 1, 2, and 3. So if 1 and 2 are yes, the question becomes, who pays? Who helps to offset it? So that, I'd want to know, I'd want to get some more information around that. So if we're reducing for middle housing, there's already a burden we're putting on single-family housing. And then on top of that, if we're doing more, what does that really look like? When we talk about the size of a home, the size of a home, I think you know where I'm going with this. It does not correlate to the number of people who are in the home. So as an example, if you have a 2,000-square-foot home, four bedrooms, three kids, two adults, five people living in that home, they do not have an irrigation system, and they all take showers, they wash their clothes, that's a single-family home, and then you have five ADUs that have five individuals living in them, is the use potentially the same? Possible. So I just like to make sure that when we talk about the size of a home, we understand it doesn't relate to people in the home or the use of the home. It's just a square foot. It's an arbitrary number. When we, so when we talk about the utility rates for, like, sewer as an example, we're studying sewer, and we talk about capital projects, do we take into consideration the new lining that we're doing as well in these studies? Because I know we've talked about that, and we're saving money. We're improving, and we're being able to do more with our money, so I want to make sure we're continuing to have that conversation. Let's see here. The word "fair share" came up quite a bit, paying a fair share. And so I'm going to be really curious as we go through the conversations on what that really means when it comes to equity across our entire community, not just facets of our community based on the type of way you live in the community, right? So there was a big, you had the commercial piece up there, and you have the residential and the multifamily, and you gave the example, which was just an example. But when I looked at that, it said multifamily has, that uses, that pays more than single-family. But in essence, it depends on who's living in what type, right? So just want to make sure that we were talking through that a little bit. When it comes to the storm, I think it was a 120-day model to recoup. So is storm going to continue to increase tenfold because of the new stormwater policies that are going into effect, or how's that going to work?
If it's okay to respond to some of these, because this is a discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so storm, it's also, there's, we have a lot of storm staff, and that's because of the compliance and the rest. We have a very significant stormwater system. So when you think about, like, is it going to increase a lot? The answer is probably no. As we improve things and as stormwater, you know, you see redevelopment and the rest, things get better and better and better, there'll still always be a background, and they'll still always increase the requirements. But these numbers we're talking about, like sewer, with sewer treatment, the answer's no. We don't anticipate unless, and we get fair warning as well. These NPDS permits come out about every five years. There's a new one coming out, draft, within the next few months. So we know what's coming, and we can program it, and we've got a bit of leeway. But I'm thinking that 10 times and the rest, you're kind of alluding to the sewer treatment. That is out of our control, and we just do our best.
Yeah, you do an amazing job. I mean, I've sat through a few of these now with you, and the work that we do here at the city and the thoughtful process in which we go through is amazing. So I'm really not questioning that. What I'm, where my mind goes is, we talk about growth, we need to have this conversation about utilities and the infrastructure, right? And the importance of that. So when we start saying, let's add different housing types, right? We're not going to use the word middle housing, housing types. What is the true impact? So if you add 1,000 units on one road, what is the true impact? You talk about one meter for a multifamily or a commercial structure, what is the real impact? So that's kind of where my mind goes, is making sure that we have conversations around that as far as the infrastructure piece. The water, so the utilities that we currently, the utilities that we currently pay for, are those owned by Bothell? Or are they outsourced? Meaning, are we paying other jurisdictions? So like, are rates, for instance, for sewer treatment is being paid to King County, correct?
Correct, for treatment, just like the wholesale rates for treatment and for purchase. But these utilities, in my opinion, belong to the ratepayers. Because we're just administrators of this system. It's an enterprise fund, it's set aside as a business to make sure that, you know, it's not drawing funds off or planting funds to somewhere else. But yeah, in my opinion, it's owned by the ratepayers, and it's our mission to do the best we can with that and keep rates as low as possible, but also to make sure that we collect revenue. And I know I'm getting off on a tangent here, but I'm not sure all utilities see it that way. Because to me, this isn't, this isn't an asset the city owns. This is a system that our community uses, and we're to do the best we can to keep rates low, but collect enough to do the work we have to do so we don't have problems in the future. We're doing lead service lines inventories. You don't, some of these things we should bring forward and discuss more, and maybe we will in the future, but right now, there's federal requirements through the EPA to map all our service lines and understand which ones could be led. And that's in reaction to what happened on the East Coast. And so these little things that we're doing in the background, infiltration, inflow of the sewer. So those are more of the capital facility plan-type discussions. But what we're doing is, we're making sure we're ahead of the game on that. And I'm not sure why I'm saying all this stuff, but I really want to... You really want to reiterate that this is the community system, we're the stewards of that system, we want to collect the appropriate rates and do our work well. And then, and you brought up the, you know, fair share. I don't know another way to say that, because to me, this, you could equate it to equity, and this is, I'm not sure it's okay to say this, but I really don't think if it's one home and five ADUs, that these five ADUs should be paying the same as this one home. Where all of a sudden, we have one lot that we forecast in the future for one meter, $7,400, and now it's going to have five units, and now we're going to get $35,000. To me, that's not equitable, because these five units will likely not have the same burden as four single fam, or five single-family residential rates. And that's, those are the type of things that FCSG will look at a bit. Part of this is policy, though, because some jurisdictions, utility districts right now, nope, it's got a meter, it's going to pay the full facility charge, it's got a meter, it's going to pay the full rate. Well, did you account for that housing when you did your forecast? No, it's brand new.
Yeah, I agree with you. I guess what I'm saying on that piece of it, and I got two more things I want to, and then I'll close out, but I guess what I'm saying is, if I have five people that live in my house, and then five people live in that smaller house, and then five duplexes or whatever, ADUs or whatever, if each person takes the same amount of showers and uses the same amount of water, are we going to be paying the same amount based on the usage? And if the answer to that is yes, then I'm okay. But if the answer to that is no, I'm going to pay more because my house' square footage is bigger, then that's inequitable to me.
Yeah, I agree.
So, but I'm agreeing with you if it's, everybody's going to pay the same amount. So to me, it just, I just want to make sure we have a conversation. The cost recovery piece, I'm glad you brought up, ensuring that we're cost recovery, cost recovery not today, but also looking into the future. I know we're setting this for 2024, but making sure that we're looking into the future. And the last piece I want to leave with is the impact fees, because growth has an impact on our community. And ensuring that we're at least having somewhat of a touch on that during this conversation, I think is going to be important on what, how development pays for that one-time impact versus loan.
Yeah, and just one more. I know we're taking a little more time than we thought, but this is, it's really appreciate this feedback. So there is a facility charge evaluation as part of this study, but it's not to look at the total revenue for the facility charges. That's stat, we did that two years ago. It's to say, okay, is this right? Should this ADU be paying $7,400 for this 3/4-inch meter, and this all pay the same? So that the denominator won't change, it's, the numerator, sorry, the top won't change, it's the total amount of funds, but all of a sudden, I'm not saying this happens. Let's say every home in the city of Bothell gets an ADU, right? And they all have their own meter. Well, that changes everything. I mean, it changes the growth. Is it going to change significantly the amount of improvements we have to do? We're not going to know that until we get to the comp plan and the CFP, but we'll be looking at that. So it really is looking at buying in, getting back to your, it's not impact fees, it's facility charges, and they just have little different ways we can use them. Facility charge can only...
I love the way you think, and I'm going to spin it on you. What happens if I live in a 4,000-square-foot home by myself, and now I'm paying more than the guy who lives in an ADU in my backyard?
It's a really good point. Yeah.
Just saying. I know you guys do a great job, so that's, I'm just throwing that out.
Sure. And right now, we're not looking at changing your usage charges for what you use, it's like the base rate. Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So for the first two questions, my answers are also yes. I, having lived, I grew up in a... I, having lived, I grew up in a, a eleven hundredish square foot home. And now I live in a bigger home, but with the same amount of people ironically. And it, you, we used to have a schedule for showers and everyone had to be out the door at eight, eight AM. And everyone had like a timeline and if you went over, someone would turn off the light on you, it was a whole thing. So I, I do think there's definitely different water usage and different living situations. But I would want to see numbers and examples and data to back that up before we make the decision. But yeah, I, just based on past research I've done, I would, I would say yes for sure if the data bears that out. And then I did want to ask, um, Councilwoman McNeil brought up a super good point that, that had me thinking. So you mentioned who offsets reducing costs for some households. I guess I don't think of it like, okay, if we're going to charge someone on a fixed income less, I'm going to pay more. So can you tell a little bit about how those programs are funded and how we do offer those discounts?
Yeah, for, um, for sure. Those are good questions. So right now for senior low income and the rest, it's, it's just policy. It, it, you, you could ask someone like FCSG to say, well, do, do low income people use less water and less burden on the, on the system? And it's, that's really hard to answer. So right now it's policy and it's the same with, um, senior disabled, uh, disables. And, and on that, we're even looking at, okay, well, how do the counties do this? Because right now we have our own walk through the, but, but there are some things that counties already have set in place where they have really good ways to, to get this going. So if someone is applying for tax exemption, which takes care of our stormwater fees to the county, why are we making them come back in and do the same thing for us? I mean, can we piggyback those things? And I, I really think it's, it, you both bring up good points. I'm, I'm paying more, who's paying less. I think with these increases in types of housing, we'll see actually more growth than is anticipated. And we'll have more customers in the community. So that, that should offset things pretty well. So I'd, I'd rather not think of this as, okay, I'm charging this single family residential unit more, I'm not saying if you get to that, and I'm charging this ADU less. I'd say, well, we never anticipated the revenue from this ADU. And the burden on the system is relatively small. So can we work that all together to show this? Where we can lower affordabilities to housing or barriers to housing. But still, I, I wish there's another way to say fair share. But it really is, they still should pay for their fair share. If, if you're paying $2.50 per hundred cubic feet, you're going to be paying the same amount if you use the water. But should you be paying the same base rate or the same buy-in rate? And that's where we're trying to get. Does that answer your?
Yeah, no, it helps. And I think, I think for me, I'm looking at it more as a, as a, as a policy decision, right? Like there are times where we all, you know, when a child gets free or reduced lunch. It's not like I'm paying more for my son's lunch for someone else to have a free lunch. We as a society are saying, okay, we are going to pay for this child's lunch so that they can eat. So I'm, I totally appreciate and am behind, um, offering people of, of low income or on fixed incomes, opportunities to make sure that, you know, they can afford to the utilities in their homes. So yeah, um, for me, I'm for it. Thank you.
At least I think I'm going to be fast here. You guys are all making great observations and, and comments. I love the, the brain think tank here. I appreciate the fairness piece that you're focusing in on. The first born in me and anybody who's been a parent. Fairness is a big key, important word that we all function by. So I do appreciate that. Two things. Yes, on the two, on, uh, your first two questions there. My caveat is middle housing is not necessarily affordable housing. It's market rate. So I, I think I would like, if you're talking about, um, making some allowances, I would look at ha- middle housing that has affordable, some, like a AMI attached to the units, uh, the buildings, then, um, I, I would like to see that versus just a blanket. If it's middle housing, it automatically gets special consideration. And then I have a question about sewer. Our discussion here is not going to cover sewer or yes?
Most definitely.
Okay, so here's my question. Cause I'm all about rainwater percolating through, you know, land. If you have, let's say, two comparable pieces of property that are a half acre, same water drainage, same, um, level, you know, slopes and that kind of thing. And one is, has 25% of it built out for say, a single family home. And another one has a multifamily or a commercial where there's a lot of stormwater that is shed off the building. Is that ever considered in sewer rates? Uh-uh?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, it is, it is, uh, confined to stormwater rates. It is dealt within the stormwater rates, but, um, not, you, you know, we don't have combined sewer and stormwater systems anymore. That used to be commonplace. With that separation, sewer has been treated entirely different. You know, infiltration and inflow is still.
Did I say sewer? Sewer, I meant strictly stormwater.
Oh, so yes, it is. It is dealt within stormwater.
Okay.
Yeah.
Both start with S. I probably missed it, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, okay, so it is, it is looked at in the stormwater rates.
And we'll show you how the rate structure does, uh, address that when we, when we get to that point.
Perfect, thank you. Have, have, I, I'm going to yield the floor here, but I just want to say have fun spending your summer noodling all the numbers here.
Oh, we love this stuff.
And just to add to this, I didn't mean to be talking so much, but I get excited about this, so chime in anytime. But you brought up a really interesting point. Because from my frame of reference, when I think of other housing types, it might be on smaller lots. They probably have, one, they get, you get more of them. So you get more connections and more revenue, but they have less burden. But, but if, let's say there is a housing type that is deemed affordable and has the restrictions and has everything else. I mean, it, it's, that's a policy decision, just like senior low income disabled. And those, there are not a lot of those. So that's a really good one that we're going to just make sure we document because that hasn't really come up yet. There's this affordability is in everything. But if, like with House Bill 1110, if you can get an extra unit or extra two units and, and restrict them as affordable, maybe that should be looked at as well because that is a policy thing. So that's, that's pretty cool.
I'll keep my, my comment short. For the first one, I think classifying it as like a needs-based discount program is probably the best way. The classifications up there face the same issues you get whenever you classify any group of people. You've got people at the high end, you've got people at the low end, you've got people in the middle. And there's just no way to say, just because you're disabled, you don't have a high income just because you're retired. You didn't save a lot for your retirement or, or living off a pension or whatever it may be. So I'd say needs base for that one. And then the second question, I think Councilmember McNeil kind of hit at home with what I was thinking as well. In my home, there's five of us. Before we bought it, there were two people. And I look around my neighborhood, we're all about the same house size. Varies two people to six, seven people. So how do you charge based on square footage? When you don't know the number of people living there? So that's a tougher one, I think. Opened ideas, open to, you know, what you think, um, is an equitable way to do it. So look forward to seeing what you come back with on that. But, um, I just, off the top of my head, I can't think of how you would properly assess that. But I'm not in this field of work, so I will defer to you all as you embark upon this body of work. But I think that's, that's all the feedback I have.
Really not trying to take too much time, but this is valuable conversation. So like for water, there's a base rate you pay and then it's all usage. That's very equitable. You can, it's what you use, right? And you can look at the base rate. For sewer, we have a built-in for CCF allowance. Now that's where we're looking at another rate. It could be that you just pay a base rate and you pay for all your usage. What gets difficult is with like King County. You don't use any and you're paying a hundred and four dollars to the city so we can pay King County. So those are the things that we're really looking into. And that's why we're looking at these other rate classes. Because multifamilies build differently. Multifamilies build on usage. And you might find that when you do this evaluation, if you build on usage, which we're allowed for certain classes, they actually pay much less per dwelling unit. Like, I don't know, maybe a third. So those are the type of things we're looking at. So we, we can't address everything. Okay, there's one person here and there's five people here. But that's why we're looking at sizes and classes and usage. So we really want to focus on, yeah, we have to pay King County for this. We have to pay SPU for that. How can we make it so it's, it's the fair share thing?
The water, the water point's an interesting one and I wasn't going to say anything about it. But, um, it is also difficult because if you have six people in your house, four, five people, six people, you're going to quickly cross over that threshold into paying more for the higher CCF rate. Even though, you know, if you look at the ratio of water usage per person, it could be equal, but you're automatically penalized for it, um, because you're in a higher category. And I, I didn't think about this until I started paying for water myself. And I can go around telling my children like, turn off the water faster, take less baths, uh, more showers, you know, things like that. But in the reality of things, I, I can have little effect on that. So I, you know, I kind of stuck with paying always the second tier usually. Sometimes the third tier in the summer, unfortunately, with trying to keep, um, things watered in my yard. My previous homeowners put in a lot of landscaping, which requires water. So, um, but you know, that's, that's a tough thing too. And I don't, I don't necessarily know that that's a fair way to do it, but I understand why it's done. Conserving water is important. It's going to become more important in the future. So it does make me think like, how can I conserve water? But it's also out of my control in some ways too. So it's, is what it is. But, um, glad, glad that we do think about it in that way.
Yeah, this housing types thing is interesting. Like the new housing types weren't even legal until just recently. So this is all new problems that we're trying to discover and, and explore and analyze. So, which is a good, I'm very interested in this. But I have a more philosophical question. The city exists to provide services to the community, to its residents, right? To maintain or improve their quality of life. Like that's why the city exists. The government exists to do this. There are exceptions, but in general. And I really, I realize we're not a federal government, so we don't have a printer in the basement where we print cash, you know? So we have to make some money. And, but the here, that we're thinking of this thing as a business, which is a for-profit. Usually businesses have fiduciary responsibility to, you know, return to the shareholders, our, our ratepayers. And we're trying to, uh, the, the, the issue we have here is that we're a monopoly. Like you have to pay us or you don't get service, right? There's no competition. So we get to set the rates. I know we're trying our best to not really gouge and all that. So I, that's why it's a philosophical question. Why are we, uh, not thinking of other ways of raising funds? In the future, maybe not in the next couple of years, but like think about it for in the next 10, 20 years or whatever. That will maybe from the general fund to fund some of this stuff so that our, we won't have to raise 6% every year or 7% towards the, and like the, towards the end of the decade, you know? So that's what my philosophical, uh, question, as I was looking at this. This has been my question, every time we come here, we say, we don't raise the rates. It's like, dang, why are we doing this? We're supposed to provide a service. And I realize where there's costs associated with providing this service. But there are other, other ways to fund it. And that's the, that question I have, uh, in general, you know?
I would love to have this because I have really strong feelings about this. Because I, 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 this utility is very serious, but I'd love to hear what FCSG has to say about that before I say something. If it's okay to have that discussion.
Who's going to take that one? That, that, that is, that is a great philosophical question. And I'm, I'm, I hope I don't overreach here. But, um, utilities like we're talking about, water, sewer, stormwater, they have, um, very important health considerations, right? If you don't provide clean water, that's a health risk to the population. So to subject them to annual prioritization against all the different, uh, all the different services that are provided by a city, you know, that police, in some cases, fire, all these other. You, you are, you are putting at risk the health and safety of the population. So these, these services have been carved out and, um, they are utilities because of that fact. And treated as they're not-for-profit businesses. They're only businesses in the sense that you determine the cost of providing the service. And then the revenue needed to recover those costs, that's what the rates do. That's the, the price, if you were a business, that you would be charging in order to recover the cost without profit. Only the cost of providing that service. So, and it is to take them out of that, of that, um, general fund framework where you would be prioritizing them against other really important needs every year because of the health, uh, health and safety concerns. So I hope that, does that get at your philosophical question?
Just to respond, I mean, we know police required, fire required. Like we're not going to say we're not going to pay. We can say utilities required.
Well, you, you can, but we have state and federal mandates we have to comply with. I mean, there's, there's all these things that are in the background that if we don't get those things, we don't have our certification.
No, I, I understand.
No, no, I'm just trying to get.
Cost recovery.
It's, it's, it's a tough one because it is not-for-profit. It's, this is our service. It's a, we're stewards of this utility and it, it really is tough. And I have to be really, I'll, I'll pick on parks today. This isn't, okay, do we want new turf or do we want a water main? There is no regulatory agency that says you're going to replace, well, there's safety stuff, we'll just close the park. But there's no regulatory agency, you got to do that. And even with police, are we going to, are we going to swap out the cars this year or next year? And that's, that's important, important as well. But it really is, we have to do these things. We have to comply with Department of Health for Water. And that's, that gets all back to the Growth Management Act. I live out in the woods, I've got a well and a septic system. It fails, I get sick, oh well, I'm not impacting my neighbors. That's different here. We're responsible and that's why we have GMA. That's why we have all these services and we have to hit those.
But that wasn't my, my question. My question is, yes, given those things, why is the burden of supporting these things on the ratepayers? Not some other source?
And there could be sources. We can get grants, we can get loans, we could ask council for ARPA funds for utility projects.
Well, those things are going to run out eventually.
They are, but.
Also, our whole city is not, are not all ratepayers under these systems. That's because I don't pay into the city water or sewer.
But that's what my, my next question is, this is only for a subset of the Bothell residents, right? So like what happens to me with North Shore utility district?
They'll be going through the same thing and I hope they listen to their, their board is like we listen to council and we listen to, to our community. I think, and I'm not just saying this, I think we have a, a good level of service and reasonable rates at the city of Bothell. And I think that the fact that we can use those people for plowing streets and responding to emergencies, we can when we need to, I think it makes the city stronger. A full-service city is much, much stronger than a city that just provides, in my opinion, police, fire, parks. Because when someone needs to shut down a street or respond to an emergency, you have that economy to scale. So yeah, so there are other funds, but it typically is grants or loans or one-time subsidies from something or, or like. But I mean, can we put turbines in the water mains to generate electricity? Yeah, you can do that. Some people do that to help fund that stuff. Can we put cell towers on city facilities? Yeah, we do that and those funds come in. But I would like to hear more about these thoughts in the future because maybe there are some avenues, just like that affordable housing, let's treat it this way, that, that we might be able to take advantage of. And you folks might have some things to say about that.
Well, the only other thing, and I, and I wish I could say this with authority, but I'm not sure that you even legally have the option to do it another way. You know, we're talking philosophically, but, um, and, and I mean, there are, there are other funding sources like Boyd mentioned, you know, if you can get grants and loans, we would, we would always recommend that you pursue those. They just reduce the burden on the ratepayers. They don't ever erase it because operating costs are not covered by grants and loans. Those have to be recovered in the, in the rate base. So, um, yeah, so philosophically, I, I, I hope we've touched on the reasons. I believe there's a real, there are real strong legal reasons as well.
So the law says you have to collect the full cost from the users of the system?
I'm not even going to try and quote it for you, but we can follow up with some of that, um.
What I'm saying, it's not a, this is the philosopher, this is the question I have even from the previous discussion we had about rates. Why are we continuing to do this when, and if, if there is another option? Unless it's required by law, the state says you have to do with this. option? Unless it's required by law, the state says you have to do it this way, so we have to do it this way.
Well, you are responsible for meeting all regulatory requirements that apply to municipal utilities.
Indeed, this is a given.
And in many cases, like, for example, stormwater, when, when the MPDES requirements came out in the 90s, phase one, and this is not going, this is just a sort of corollary, okay, an example. Phase one cities, not only were they, and Bothell is not a phase one city, Bothell's a phase two city, but the phase one cities were required not only to set up stormwater programs, but to set up funding for their stormwater program. And that's when we saw many, many rates for stormwater emerge. They had to set up separate funding for their stormwater management programs. I'm pretty certain there's statute like that for water and wastewater, and that's what we'll provide for you.
Yeah, and we can, we can look at this more, but, I mean, we have municipal code policies to keep the reserves. We have to keep that. And then, then we could just not have staff or do projects, and there's no expense. But that's, that won't work very far. So it, I'm not trying to be flippant, or whatever the word is. It really is, is if we're looking out to see what we need to do to stay in compliance, because if we don't stay in compliance with health, we can't do water.
No, I, you keep, this is not my point. This is not my point. My point, there is costs. I get it. There's regulations. I get it. I'm just saying, why is the burden on the users of the system not on the city, which is supposed to be providing the service?
Oh, and I think that gets, and I understand what you're saying, but I really think it gets back to, it's the regulatory part, and the fact that they are defined as enterprise funds. And that really is it. I'm, I-
And I think we can do some follow-up, too, in terms of providing a little bit more analysis. The important thing to remember, though, too, is that no matter which fund something comes from, if it's collected by the city, is that the public is paying for it. So even out of the general fund.
I know. It's different when you pay it monthly versus like every six months or whatever. I, I don't know.
Totally, totally. But I think we can do some breakdown of-
Or do it now, and then in the future.
What is informed historically, these decisions, and where are the room, where is, where and if there's room?
If that's in scope. This is a question. If you tell, come back, and you tell me, you know what, Rami, you're full of whatever, I will not, I will not argue.
I don't know if you've met Boyd Denson, but I don't think that'll be the one.
No, no, no. It's, it's, maybe, maybe there's some funds out there. Rami's talking about-
If Boyd did that, that would be like the best council meeting ever. I just wanna say it, like.
I could go on and on on that one. I agree with everything else that my fellow council member said, so I'm not gonna go. The communications plan, can we do it earlier and more frequently so that people will not, it's, because I saw in your cycle, it was towards the end of the, you know, the whole process.
It's already in process.
Yeah, awesome. Cause I, you know, we don't wanna catch the folks who, who will get the most burdened by surprise. So that's, that's all. That's it. Thank you.
What is MPDS?
National Pollution Discharge Elimination System.
Thank you.
It's, it's EPA down to ecology. National, oh.
I just wanna jump in really, really fast to kinda add on to what Councilmember McNeil started, and Councilmember Dodd-Mackey said. I think we all kind of like the idea of a lower base rate, and then make it up in usage, just to make sure that people are paying for what they're actually using. Because I think the main concern that I would have is people in smaller units paying that, you know, higher base rate, and then not using it all. It's kinda like if you go to the dump, and you don't have the minimum weight, you feel like you didn't get, didn't get a good deal. Transfer station, baby. One other, one other thing, you know, we have, and we will over the next few years, have deed-restricted affordable housing. Is there a way we could apply the automatic discount to that property?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Zorn's brought that up, and I, I think that's pretty darn cool.
To tack on to that, too, I think the idea, I liked, I liked what you said about if someone is getting a property tax exemption, let's not make them prove all over again that they have needs. And I think about programs like free and reduced lunch. There are different, you know, people who qualify for different forms of Medicare or Medicaid, like, just let's not have people have to reinvent the wheel every time that they're struggling. So however, it's up to you to figure out how, but yeah.
That's a good idea, too. I didn't mean to not credit you. I'm sorry. Okay.
I just wanna say, and I wasn't saying you didn't credit her. I just, I just, that was a new one. And it's like, oh, this makes really good sense. If we can do this because they can prove that they have low income or disabled, if it's affordable housing, it's restricted, why not? That's a policy decision, but why not? Why doesn't that?
Attach it to the unit, yeah.
25% discount apply, which I think is outstanding.
Yep.
No, no, I was not annoyed with you. Thank you for pointing that out. I, I like to give credit where credit is due, when somebody says something first.
So, so can you clarify that one more time for me? It's not tied to the unit, it's tied to the need? Just wanna make sure I'm clear, because if somebody, if we tie it to a unit, and it has all these-
There, there's both ways to look at this, yeah.
Discounts and things, and then somebody goes in there that doesn't need that, then they're, they're receiving that benefit. Just wanna make sure.
So, no, no, this is, and once again, this is way more time than, and I'll probably get to talking to later on. This is way more time than we anticipated, but this is really valuable, because the next time we come forward, it's gonna be with a bunch of numbers. And if we present a bunch of numbers and don't talk about this, this is where we get in trouble. So I see this two ways. There's the burden. Does one home have the same burden as four ADUs? Probably not. Do four, does one ADU have the same burden as one home? Probably not, irrespective of the, of what we're talking about. Then there's the senior, low-income, disabled, and now there's an affordability. Those are all policy. It's really hard to demonstrate that a senior, you know, low-income person's gonna use less water. Those are all policy decisions. And that's why the municipal code, through the council, charges 75% instead of 100%. So when you said, well, if it's deed-restricted, and they get an extra unit because it's deed-restricted affordable housing, can we tie it to that? It's like, yeah, that's, that's awesome. Because they'll have to. The, the users of that, since it's deed-restricted, must have that, you know, situation. So I think that's neat.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for the time. All right, next up, we have council conversations. Seeing none? Oh, oh.
I, I'm checking something.
Gotta be quicker on the draw.
Because it's, I know. Oh, okay. I'd like a moment of silence. Tonight, the sun sets at 9 o'clock. I know. That means from here tomorrow, it'll be, what, 8:59? Yeah.
Go in the right direction.
We're on that slippery slope, so enjoy 9 o'clock sunset.
All right. I gotta jump in before Ben starts talking. Council's gonna adjourn to executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101G to review the performance of a public employee for one hour with no action. Council will adjourn the meeting from there at 8:49 PM.
Recording stopped.
For one hour.